All right, I'd like to welcome you to the special meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectmen for December 26, 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm gonna ask that we rearrange the agenda a little bit in consideration of the folks who are here with us tonight, but I want to go through the first couple items on the agenda first. Correspondence, there are a couple of things I would like to call to your attention, and I apologize, these are late getting to you guys because we've had, for various reasons, we've had a number of meetings that were either rescheduled or canceled, so this is the first chance we've had to put them on the agenda. There is a letter from Mr. Boyle from Base Technologies.
Matt, could you just speak up while the air's on?
Okay. It's not picking up, okay.
It won't pick it up as well.
Okay, so there are two letters I want to call to your attention. One is from Base Technologies. This was in response to, basically, nothing official from the Town of Bethel, this was in response to an accusation that was made in a news website prior to the election. You can read that at your convenience. Second one is a letter from the Freedom From Religion Foundation. This was turned over to the town attorney, and I asked him to conduct some research on this, and again, no action required in either one of these tonight, but I wanted to bring this to your attention. They were received and addressed to the Board of Selectmen, so we can, you can read those and take any action you wish at a future meeting. I don't think any other correspondence came in, did it? Okay. Moving on to public input, and I think, see, we have people on the agenda tonight, so we'll go past that. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of Tuesday, November 12th is next on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Matt, the amendment, the amendment that was, it's right there, nope, right here. Right here.
Oh, it's up there.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That's to the, yeah, that's to the 15th. Okay, so we have, did you second it?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay. So we have a motion for to approve the minutes of the special meeting of Tuesday, November 12th. Any comments, corrections?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of Friday, November 15th, 2019. And there's an amendment, let's put the main motion on the floor first.
I'll submerge.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion to amend consideration of appropriation of fund balance to capital nonrecurring amount. It's a transfer, and that is, that's the first item. It should read, sum of $500,000 transferred from general fund to capital nonrecurring, and the sum of $990,000 transferred from general fund to debt services to pay down short-term debt. It's a relatively minor adjustment in language.
Make, amend my motion to reflect the amendment.
Okay. All right.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on those minutes?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. First selectman's report, there are just one thing I want to call to your attention. I want to recognize two employees of the Town of Bethel, Lisa Plum, who is a director of our senior center, and Mary Churchill, who is our benefits coordinator. They both earned their CCMO certification. This is an educational program that's sponsored by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. It's a very interesting and very rewarding new program that was started about 18 months, two years ago. And what this amounts to is that any CCM member, town employee, and official, an elected official, can, by taking 36 hours of instruction, which is offered through CCM, can earn a certification as a certified Connecticut municipal official. The certification centers on three development areas, which is personal development, community development, and what's the third one, Deion? It's related to, you have to take nine different courses at least in the three areas.
Three different areas.
Three different areas. And just to show you what they, what they get, Deion was the, was in the first graduating class of 2018. There were only 10 people who earned the certification. This year, there were 66 people, and this is the certification that comes from Trinity College, which is the partner that develops the educational programs. Very rewarding, and I want to congratulate Deion again, being one of the first graduates, with Lisa and Mary. This really demonstrates a commitment by our employees to provide excellent service to the people of the Town of Bethel. And I congratulate them and thank them for their hard work. So that's all I really had for the report tonight. Do you guys have anything to add, any questions? Oh, personnel, personal development and personnel and community development, so that's what, that's how it centers. So the courses range from, you know, planning and zoning, land use, public finance, public policy with regard to a variety of things that the local government gets involved in, police work, how to understand that, budgeting for police, emergency management, so congratulations again to the CCMO graduates. So I'm going to ask that, if it's, with the consent of my colleagues, we skip down to number eight, consideration of management agreement between Yvonne Grimes, Board of Education at Town of Bethel, if that's the meeting.
Fine, just do that.
Okay.
And number nine as well.
Yeah, eight and nine. So I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Olson, who represents the Board of Selectmen with the negotiations.
I represent the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education.
Yep, the Town of Bethel, I should say.
Yeah, so this is a different conversation than we've been having a week ago. I guess things have progressed along to the point where I'm happy with where we are that this is the end. So the fieldhouse is complete, a CBO was issued, and they are ready to start operating it, which is great news. The management agreement that's in front of you as item eight was drafted and intended to be the document that defines the relationship between the town, the Board of Ed, and Yvonne Grimes as the manager of the facility after it's turned over to the town. It basically says that she's got to comply with all the town's regulations, there's a priority for usage, talks about how funds are to be used, who's paying for what. And so this was approved by the Board of Education back in August, and took till November to get Yvonne to sign it, but it was finally signed in November, and Melanie O'Brien has signed off as Chair of the Board of Ed, and it's ready for execution by Board of Selectmen. So before we do that, I want to explain where else things are going, which is the next item on the agenda, because there's other things to review and sign. When these documents were originally drafted, it was the intention of the Grimes to operate the fieldhouse as the owners for a short period of time before turning it over to the town, which is why we had the lease provision set at two years. They decided three weeks ago that they wanted to turn over as soon as the CBO was issued, which created some issues, because there were obviously items that weren't complete. There was a punch list items that had to be completed, and it was unclear whether they had paid for the entire amount due of the fieldhouse, particularly with regard to subcontractors. If they did not do that, then the town would be left open to a subcontractor claiming non-payment and putting a mechanic's lien on what is essentially the ice cream. So after going back and forth many times with some insurance items and basically laying down the law with them, what's happened as of today is that all punch list items are complete. That means to me that this fieldhouse that Yvonne Grimes designed, built, is her baby, she's happy with it, all the punch list items are done before it's turned over to the town. Number one. Number two, all invoices for November from Claris, who's the general contractor, have been paid to Claris, and the checks are going out. They're not all processed and, you know, in the hands of the subcontractors, but that's in process. Claris estimates that for December, there will be approximately $348,000 in invoices, including retainage and extra fudge factor, I guess. And that includes Claris' payments and subcontractor's payments. The Grimes have wired that fund, those funds to Claris, and Claris has them in their hands. And then they do not anticipate that there will be any additional funds, any additional billings after those December invoices are paid, but if they are, they'll wrap it up within 60 days and deal with the direct move to Grimes. There's an affidavit that, as I passed out for you, from Claris that says all of that. In addition, I asked them to sign mechanic's lien waiver from Claris as the general contractor, and what's called an affidavit and indemnity agreement between the general contractor and the owner, Grimes, saying essentially they'll be responsible if any mechanic's liens are put on there. With all of that, the second document for your approval is an assignment of the contract between BHS Track and Field Center, Inc. and Claris to the town with Claris' consent, so that if there's any issue with the building going forward, the town as the owner is now also a party to the contract and can go and enforce any rights that exist under the contract. The assignment agreement draws a hard line on the date of the assignment that says anything that was done before this is the BHS Track and Field Center's responsibility, anything after is the town. So those are the two documents that are for your action and approval tonight. Then I anticipate receiving a notice of termination of the lease from BHS Track and Field Center tomorrow, assuming you have to approve this tonight, that will say, we've got a CBO, we have the right under the ground lease to terminate, so we terminate. And then the first selectman will have to sign a notice of termination for recording in land records. This is not the document for signature, this is a couple of weeks old now, so I just want to fill up the dates, and I'll bring it over to you for signature after we get the notice. So for your action tonight is to approve the management agreement, the assignment of the contract, and the form of the notice of expiration. And then authorize the first selectman to sign the management agreement and sign the contract. Questions?
Yeah. Rich, you go ahead.
Well, let me just.
Well, I wasn't involved with this building like some of the other buildings in Kennesaw. I did do a walkthrough with some of the members of Board of Education last week, or two weeks ago. It's a pretty impressive building that they put up, and from what the attorney is telling us, everything is complete, and, but I do have one question. Is it the normal policy that we release the retainage, or do we hold retainage for a while?
It's not ours, it's BHS Track and Field Center, and the retainage is their entitled to hold money back from paying Claris.
They are, they are doing that?
No, everything will have been paid in full with the payment that was wired today, so there will be no holding back of retainage at this point.
And then you concur with that?
I concur with that, yes.
How does that play with the warranty, since it's gonna be with us?
The, all the warranties that come with all the equipment will be ours as a result of the bill of sale that we're receiving for all the personal property. The contract being assigned to the town means we have the right to enforce that contract against Claris if we need to. For example, the roof leaks, right? That's, shockingly, happens all the time. And so we now have the right to go after Claris, not BHS Track and Field Center, Inc., but Claris. Claris presumably would have the right to go after BHS Track and Field Center, Inc., if, for example, Yvonne told them to do it this way. They would bring them into that case.
Or her architect.
Or her architect, or whoever, but, yeah.
No, you said.
But the contract now will belong to us.
And you say Yvonne will be manager for what period of time?
It's a five-year arrangement.
Okay.
And that essentially is the manager, she's the scheduler. Yeah, she decides who gets to use it in when.
And then lastly, I noticed, I know that Claris was assuming that all the subcontractors will be paid, but are we gonna get sign offs, copies of it?
We won't. I've asked them to give me a statement within 60 days that says this is final, everybody's been paid, we're moving on. We won't get individuals' bills from the subcontractors.
I have to say, you know, I have to, Yvonne, doing this project, amazing what you can do, and you don't have regulations forcing you to do, you know, certain things like wage and everything else.
Well, just to follow up on that, one reason we don't, we won't get that stuff is we want to make sure that this remains an arm's length thing that happened that Yvonne did, and she's turning over the complete bill to us.
I'm amazed at that.
Because if anybody goes back at her about the wage and hour stuff, it's a huge liability for her.
Amazed at the importance of this project.
Yep. All right, so.
I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Where, could you point out to me where it says that she's responsible for five years of the management? Is that in any of this paperwork that we have?
It's in the management agreement, which emailed to you guys.
They have it.
All right.
Yeah.
Because I know there was some discussion about this, so I just wanted to say it.
Yeah, just, section four, section 4.1.
Date of the CBO was issued.
Okay, those were my questions, thank you.
Yeah, the management agreement also sets out exactly who gets to use it in order of priority, and that was.
Section 1.3, that was the subject of quite a lot of back and forth.
Yeah.
And to be honest, at the end, I threw up my hand and said, I don't care. It's gonna happen, people are gonna use it when they get to use it, basically.
Yeah, well, that's under the Board of Ed's control anyway, so.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so, okay, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor, which one do you lead first?
Management agreement.
All right. I will make a motion that we approve the management agreement between the Town of Bethel and Bethel Track and Field Center Incorporated, per recommendation by Attorney Olson.
Second.
Is there any further discussion for the questions?
Can I just, give a comment?
Yes, please.
I don't know if you saw, but if you look under 2.1.1, it says, any collection of things for the use of the center shall be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So at some point, there would come back to you, approve whatever the fee is.
Yep. Yeah, I'm gonna read it.
Matt, can you just repeat what you, I'm scared we're not gonna be able to hear anything.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can you repeat what your motion was?
My motion was to approve the management, the proposed management agreement between the Town of Bethel and Bethel Track and Field Centers, Center LLC, as proposed by Attorney Olson.
I do want to make one note, we have, we have the bill of sale has been signed but not delivered, and it has a Schedule A that lists all of the equipment, including the building, and that's gonna be attached to the management agreement.
Yep.
So does that get the original?
Okay. All right, so I'll amend my motion to say, including Schedule A. Right? Okay, any other questions?
Who's seconded that?
I did.
Yeah. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, okay?
Which carries, sign them?
Sure.
There's two originals. And the next two, you can keep that. The next two items are approval of the assignment and assumption of contract. Just make sure that's the right name of the document. Assignment and assumption of contract, and the form of the notice of expiration or termination of ground lease and grant of temporary and permanent easements.
Is that, is that one document, is that this?
That's one document.
Okay.
The assignment's separate from the notice.
All right. So that's the document, this one?
That's the actual ground lease. What I'm asking you to approve is a form that is what you're going to sign after I actually get their notice that they're terminating the lease.
Oh, we don't have a, do we have a copy of that?
Yeah, it's in what I handed out. It says notice of expiration.
This one?
There you go, yes.
Okay. All right, I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve the notice of expiration or termination of ground lease and grant of temporary and permanent easements.
Second.
Any further questions? Rich? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
And then the last one is assignment and assumption of contract. The contract will be attached to it.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed assignment and assumption of contract.
Second.
All right. Any further questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Thank you. All right. That concludes that.
That concludes that item, thank you for taking it early.
All right.
I'll mark it.
Yeah. All right.
That's been a loop, that's contract.
Yeah, that's right. I wish everything went that smoothly. All right, if it's all right with you guys, I'm gonna recommend that we skip down to item number 15, which is consideration of a resolution pertaining to an early separation program for police officers for the Town of Bethel. If that's all right?
Yes.
And we have Attorney Shea and Captain Pugner here with us today, and I'm gonna make a motion that we enter executive session at 6:22, inviting in Deion Craig, Captain Pugner, and Attorney Shea, and Attorney Law. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. As soon as we shut off the recording, we'll be in executive session.
Okay, we're recording.
Okay, we're recording. Okay, so now we are in open session again. Marty, do I have to read the, might as well?
Oh, sure.
All right. I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve the proposed resolution for the Town of Bethel, Board of Selectmen, entitled, "Early Window Separation Program for Police Officers of the Town of Bethel, dated December 23, 2019. Whereas the Town of Bethel, the town, has proposed in the United Public Service Employees Union, COPS Division, Bethel Police Unit, otherwise known as the Union, has accepted the offering of an early window separation program to police officers of the town who have at least 15 years of service credited under the retirement plan for police officers of the Town of Bethel Police Department, otherwise known as the PLAN, and who submitted irrevocable written notice prior to January 31, 2020, of resignation from service with the Bethel Police Department on a date no later than April 1, 2020. And whereas the terms of the proposed early window separation program have been submitted to the board and are as follows. One, the window period, December 27, 2019, through January 31, 2020. Two, eligibility requirements. A, employee must have at least 15 years of service credited under the PLAN. B, employee must provide an irrevocable written notice prior to the end of window period of resignation from service with the Bethel Police Department on a date no later than April 1, 2020. Three, window benefit. For purposes of calculating the retirement benefit under the plan payable to an employee terminating employment with the Bethel Police Department during the window period, each such employee shall be credited for three additional years of service. Four, additional conditions regarding participation in the early separation window program. A, the additional three years of service will not be used to determine whether the employee is eligible for a normal or early retirement benefit. An employee participating in the early separation window program will not be eligible to commence receiving a normal or early benefit, retirement benefit unless and until the employee becomes otherwise eligible for such benefit without consideration to the three additional years of services credited for participating in the early separation window program. Accordingly, an employee may not be eligible to commence receiving retirement benefits under the plan at the time of termination of employment. B, employees who elect this option are not eligible for group health insurance after termination of employment unless they are otherwise eligible as a retiree under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement at the time of termination of employment. And whereas the implementation of the early window separation program is supported and recommended by the Chief of Police and the Comptroller, now therefore the following resolutions are hereby adopted. Resolve that an early window separation program be offered to police officers of the Town of Bethel Police Department on the terms set forth in these resolutions for the period, the date, for the period of the date of adoption of these resolutions in January 31, 2020. And it is further resolved that retirement plan for police officers of the Town of Bethel Police Department be amended to provide for the enhanced retirement benefit formula under the early window separation program on the terms set forth in these resolutions. And it is further resolved that proper offices of the town are hereby authorized and directed to take all action deemed appropriate and recommended by council to the town to effectuate the foregoing resolutions, including but not limited to the execution of any amendments or other documents that may be necessary or advisable to assure the continued tax-qualified status of the retirement plan for police officers of the Town of Bethel Police Department, as amended under the provisions of Sections 401A and 501A of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended. End of motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion carries.
Steve, just a favor to ask, and forward to Board of Selectmen, can you keep us updated as to who's accepted?
Absolutely. I think they, they have to officially put it in.
Bill.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, you know, I'd like, we'd like to be just a praise of who has and who hasn't.
Sure.
Because we're entering this crazy season shortly, budgets.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good night, and happy, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Thank you.
All right, moving, going back to the regular agenda, item number six, consideration of the 2020 meeting schedule, you have a copy in your packet. I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve the recommended schedule with one amendment, and that is the third from the bottom, November 3, 2020, happens to be election day. We always cancel the meeting, so I propose that we just leave that date off and schedule a special meeting as required.
I agree.
So I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve this list as, with that amendment.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Next item, consider, consideration of tax refunds. We have Mrs. Ganko, overpayment of a variety of taxes, and she is requesting authorization to refund an amount of $5,926.42, and this document dated December 23, 2019. So I'll make that motion?
Second.
Okay. Multiple seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Skipping down to number 10, we have before us, we're not gonna take action on this, but I just make a motion that we accept the, accept for our consideration the draft report from the Bethel Charter Commission dated December 23, 2019. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. All right, Rich seconded. Before we vote on this, Marty, what is the date by which the Board of Selectmen has to take action on this?
I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I'll have to find out. I know it's not, it's not like.
It's not imminent, right?
Three days, I mean, you know, I'll find out in the back, if there's a problem in the back.
Okay.
I think they were talking about by the end of January.
Yeah.
That would make sense, 30 days or 45 days.
We need to go ahead and have a public hearing.
And the, so the Board, so the Charter Commission has had a And that, so the board, so the Charter Commission has had, I think they've had two noticed public hearings, but the Board of Selectmen has to have one too, correct?
I think so, yes.
We've had three, the Board of Selectmen usually has one.
Okay. Do we usually have our public hearing before we request any action, or?
I think we should really have a special force, like a committee, to discuss this thing.
Yeah.
You know, in advance, just to see where our thinking here is in advance to a public hearing. There are some things in there that I don't think belong there, frankly.
Okay.
But I, I think sometime in January, you know, well before we start the budget season, we really should have a meeting just dedicated to this. This is, you know, the Charter for the Town, it's our constitution. Let's not take it lightly.
Well, our, our next regular Board of Selectment meeting would be Tuesday, January 7. We could really devote that meeting to this.
I'll get an answer before that, too.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I'll get an answer, how many days before that?
Okay.
I think if we just dedicate it to that, that would be fine.
Okay.
Well, there's a couple of other things we would need to have on the agenda. Would you want to start it at 6:30 into a special meeting?
Sure.
A special meeting for what?
This? For the charter.
The charter's going to take in, I think it'll.
Well, I mean, that would just give you 30 extra minutes to kind of start, you know.
No, I'd rather have it be a regular, what, do you know offhand what needs, what else needs to be on that agenda? Do we have any rollover items?
Well, I know that the fire department wants to be on the agenda. I would have to go back and take a look at my list. I mean, I know that there's going to be a couple of other things, but, oh, well, I mean.
I would, I would actually rather set a special meeting for that and, and keep the 7th open for the charter.
For the charter, okay. All right. So do you want to go ahead and set a special meeting?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so do you want to go ahead and set a date for a special meeting?
No, we'll, yeah, we'll do that. We can do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Look at the calendar and set that up.
Okay. So then we would set a date for the public hearing at that time?
Yeah, I think that's, so we'll defer that.
How many days do we need for a public hearing notice?
Ten.
If we have a meeting on the 7th?
Ten.
Ten days?
Yeah.
Marty, if you could double check the timeframe, because.
Public hearing.
Because we have to get it back to them. Yeah.
Well, let's see.
It has to be, yeah, we have by the end of January to get it back to them. Is that the way it goes, it goes back to them?
Yeah.
Yeah, goes back to them.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll have time.
Okay.
All right, that's good. So we'll, so we will set aside our next regular meeting, January 7, for our discussion on the charter, proposed charter changes, and we will set a date for the public hearing at that time, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe just put those other little housekeeping things, it'll take long to do it, the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as it's not too much, but, yeah, this will provide some interesting reading material, for sure. There were some changes since the first draft, I know that this is the second draft that was voted on last week. So read that over carefully, and then we'll have some fun on January 7.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item 12, this is in your packet, a letter from Aquarian Water Company. They have decommissioned a well which is up off of old Turnpike, way up on top of the hill, just under five acres, which they wish to donate back to the Town of Bethel for your charge. This has been sent over to, we, we did vote on this earlier in the fall, we sent that to P&amp;Z for a 824 review, and they, they gave it a thumbs up. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation of parcel, town parcel number 48-82-40, Payne Road, to be conveyed from Aquarian Water Company LLC to the Town of Bethel. Is there a second?
Second.
For discussion.
Okay. Any consider?
Where is this? I'm trying to, you know, old turnpike.
Is there a map?
Here, I got a, I can show you.
It's up, you know where the, the guy's building the three houses now?
Yeah, yeah.
Up in that, on top of that hill.
Oh, so next, next door to John Lennon's property.
Right, right. Down Old Turbin Turnpike, and it's probably a dirt road that goes into this property or something like that.
If, if you, if you walk out of John's driveway and, and just look down the hill, that's it.
That's it, right here. Pause, slide it over. This is the parcel here, all right? This is old Turnpike Road.
Yeah.
There's Meckhauer Circle, and there's Payne Road right there.
Okay.
You want to take a look at that?
One other thing I want to add is the, the wellhead has been removed and it's been sealed for safety.
The well's been removed?
Yes, the wellhead has been removed and it's been sealed for safety.
Is the water any good?
Yeah. It, it, well, maybe.
Well.
Well, that is nothing but a, a sand area.
Yeah.
Normally we'd find good water.
I'm just, you know, we're conveying the, the property to the, what are we conveying it to? The Land Trust or Conservation Use.
Let me just say this, I was told by Aquarian that when they do these deeds to municipalities, therefore, let me find the exact words here, environmental, excuse me, I should have found it first before I said, because I asked that, I said, what, what's going to be any catches? And I was told that when they make the transfer, it's for open space and recreational needs. And then I said, well, what does that mean? And she said, if you look up the statute, it defines. Well, I looked up the statute. The statute says, as used in this subsection, open space or recreational purposes means use of lands for agriculture, parks, natural areas, forests, camping, fishing, wetlands, preservation, wildlife habitat, reservoirs, hunting, golfing, boating, swimming, and hiking. And educational use means that are used, are used by any town, city, or borough, whether consolidated or unconsolidated, in any school district or regional school district for the purposes of the schools and related facilities. So they're going to convey it to us for open space and/or recreational purposes.
Right. So we can't turn around ourselves, is what I was getting at.
That's right. And I, you know, my, the only thing that I thought of that, this definition is, as long as it is, it's not real clear, like, can we put a ball field in there?
Well.
It says recreational.
Recreational, well, that's what it says, I know, but, but when you go for the definition, it doesn't say that. It just says agricultural parks, natural areas, forests, camping, fishing, wetlands, wildlife, reservoirs. It doesn't go back and say, you know. Park is a recreational area.
Yeah. So you, you can't build on it, but you can make it, turn it into a park.
I don't think anybody's going to complain except the people that maybe live there, I mean, next to it. Richie, but don't we own some property where they're building those three houses that are right next to it, too?
Well, there's a right away, the old Turnpike comes down there.
Old Turnpike.
There's a right away that comes down.
It's right next to it, yeah. It's between those houses being built.
Yeah.
And Meckhauer Circle, and then it's set back a little bit. The piece is set back, the four something acres.
You know, I, I don't, it says reservoirs, that what I'm getting at, is it possible in a future time, maybe the town needs to drill a new well for the municipal water system, could we put a well on that property?
Well, is that going to be a problem with Aquarian, because didn't they take over the Meckhauer well?
Yeah.
Right, they took, they took it over and abandoned it and hooked it into their.
They abandoned that one, too.
Right.
Probably could. I, I got to be honest with you, who's going to come back and?
Yeah, well.
Say anything.
Yeah. All right. Basically, I was looking, I was looking to sell the property again. Okay, all right.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion on the floor to accept the donation, line transfer, any other questions?
Did you get a second for that?
Yeah.
You, you did.
Yep.
And will you convey this to their insurance people, so will you insure it?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That motion carries. Item number 13, consideration of appointment, we only have one tonight, this is, we, I think we'll get from the two parties the, the full list of appointments to the appointed boards and commissions, probably next week, the first week of January. But we do have a vacancy left by, on Public Site and Building Comm.
Correct. You didn't get that list from Nicky?
No. Did not, I did not get that. I, I contacted him today, and he said that, I guess it was voted on at the, at the meeting, but.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to forward a letter.
Yeah, I, I did not get it in time. But anyway, I do have a recommendation to replace on Public Site and Building Commission, Victor Palomaykov, who has resigned, I have his letter of resignation, and the recommendation is, I'll put this motion on the floor to appoint Gil Letelier, L-E-T-E-L-I-E-R, to fill that vacancy for the remainder of that term, which goes until January 4, 2021.
Second.
Okay? Any questions?
Oujie.
He's, he's been a member, he's been a resident of Bethel for approximately 35 years. His father was in the construction business, and he's, he, actually, he's almost a neighbor here, she lives down on the bottom of the road. And he's drafted by trade, retired. But he knows building, and he knows plans and specifications.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? That carries. And we actually had 14 and 15, consideration of proposed resolution, early window, and retirement plan for employees, that's, that was wrapped up in the same thing, right?
No. It's two separate ones, you have the resolution for, for number 14, it, it should be at the bottom of your stack now, since you pulled.
Yep. I know, Deion is, Deion is very careful to put everything in order, and the first thing I do is I take it out of order and pull things out.
So what were you looking for, 14?
It's, it's the resolution for the Town of Bethel.
Something that they said shouldn't have been done a long time ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember that.
I remember one.
Yes.
Or it's like a, a proposed resolution, a retirement plan for employees.
Yes.
It looks like this.
Yeah, I'm almost there.
Will this help you?
Yes.
Do we need the resolution?
Nope. Okay, Marty, can you give us some, just a, a quick summary of what this is?
Well, what happened was, if you remember years ago, I think it's back in 2012, it was decided that you were going to stop with the pensions on some of the people working there. And I think what Shea's firm said was that it should have been put, according to Bob